Gavel, gavel. I call to order November 13th, 2018, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. We're going to go just in order of the agenda. So, continued public hearing, Re Street subdivision. Messina Development Company, application for definitive subdivision to subdivide map 38, lot 37 into seven single-family residence. Residential lots with municipal water under Master General Law Chapter 41, 81O, 81T, 81U in the R2 zoning district. Why don't we have the applicant come forward? Hi.
I'm Bob Messina. Here's Phil. Okay.
All right. Good job.
Thank you, Bob.
What an entrance.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, Monica, why don't you start us off while Phil gets settled? Where do we stand with the subdivision?
Okay, so I did prepare a draft decision. However, before then, I want to say that there have been new submissions that include a note at the request of DPW regarding the pump, design of the pump station. Conservation has not heard this since the street design. They'll be hearing it again tomorrow evening. So, I was told there may be some design changes once they, once they would take a look at it. Let me see. Fire submitted a comment, and I just want to make sure you guys touched base with them in regards to that. So, I don't know if you want to...
Regarding the fire department?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, can you read what they requested?
It's a little odd.
Yeah. Okay. So, back in, oh, actually, before I, before I do that, so you, at your last meeting also, you asked about including a landscaped island. DPW and Fire were not a fan of that. However, if you decide to include that, then they would have to include maintenance, like a maintenance agreement in homeowners association. Now, back to Fire's comment back from August, they, let me see, did I include that? Yes. So, number 14 in the decision, I kind of, so August 14th, Fire submitted a comment asking the engineer to provide measurements for a sweep analysis. And that was one thing I just wanted to make sure you cleared up.
That's, you know, the cul-de-sac we have is the same cul-de-sac that we've had in North Andover for at least the 40 years that I've been doing designs here. It's a 100-foot diameter cul-de-sac. And I don't know what a swept analysis is. I've never heard of that request before, and that's what the fire department has asked for. I don't know why my client should pay for an analysis that the cul-de-sac is the right size for fire equipment from North Andover if North Andover has a standard, and we're meeting the standard. What's that?
Those are the rules or regulations.
Right.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, normally, I mean, we don't have it built yet, but I assume that there's a similar-sized cul-de-sac that a fire engine could go drive around and see.
It's, it's what's been, it's your standard.
What I, what I suggested was contacting the fire chief just to go over the measurements, and then you could get an email that says, you know, this, this is fine. I mean, there's other developments where they have to get the measurements and show how the fire truck can go through, through the site. And this is, again, design that fits the measurements. But again, a quick call to Fire would clarify that. They could provide a letter that says, yes, this conforms, and we don't need this, or we could condition that they, you know, at least give a statement on that. But that was something that was supplied back in August.
The finding of fact here says his fire department has reviewed the plan, which is correct, they've reviewed the plan, and said, and will provide turning radius measurements. So, the applicant is going to provide turning radius measurements?
That's what they were asked to do.
Okay, so you can just provide the measurements?
I, I don't see the need for it.
To provide the measurements?
The cul-de-sac meets your standards of 100-foot diameter.
Right.
That standard is established by the town based upon the equipment it uses for emergency purposes. I don't know why we should have to do any work to verify that that's a valid design.
No, I'm not, no, I don't think that's what it's asking. It's just providing with the measurements. I mean, not an analysis, just...
He asked for a swept analysis.
No, no, but I think that's for them to do. I think a swept, and I just Google searched, that's...
No, the swept path analysis is something that, in developments, the engineer will provide the measurements to, to the fire department, I'm sorry, the fire department will provide the measurements of their, usually their largest fire truck. Then the engineer will come back and provide a swept path analysis showing basically the travel of the vehicle through, through, through there. What Fire asked for, and I'll pull that up again, and again, this was back in, in August, they just asked for measurements for their analysis. However, the plan does show the measurements. Simply, it, just confirming with them might be enough. At this point, since they wrote that in a comment, then it's just to answer the comment, and that's, it could be that simple.
I don't know, any of that seems necessary.
Yeah, and again, you could determine that.
Okay. All right. I had a question. So, conservation, you said that they're reviewing it tomorrow, and then that the plans may change?
Yes, so I was told that they haven't...
That's an issue.
Right, they haven't reviewed it since it was a through street, and since it became a cul-de-sac. So, tomorrow would be the first time they've met with the engineer in, since, since the summer.
Their consultants have reviewed it, Jennifer's reviewed it. As far as I know, they're in agreement with it. Conservation never closes its hearing until you guys are finished. So, that's always a problem. You know, they don't want to approve something if you haven't approved it. So, it would be most beneficial if you approve it. If they change it, we have to come back to get a modification.
Okay. So, I mean, so the risk would then be on, on us.
And also, with regard to the cul-de-sac, we'll put an island in if you want it, just tell us, and we'll make that change prior to endorsement.
Okay.
So, that's up to the board, what they want to do.
Does people have feelings about island versus no island? I don't care.
I'd like islands, I think. Get it's an amended to the town, I think we should do it. And it doesn't create any problems.
What was DPW's issue with it?
Snow removal mostly.
They always, they want like a 40-foot wide roadway. I mean, I, the reason why I know is my street has one, and we have never had a problem, and they've never had a problem. It just is a little bit easier for them to...
Aaron, any thoughts?
I tend to err on, on public services, but I don't see the island as much of an issue.
Peter?
I'll go for the island.
Okay, all right. So, island is in.
So, again, I think that would have to be part of the homeowners' maintenance agreement, so.
Okay. You good with that?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Anything else, Monica, that we need to look at?
Didn't we come up with a name yet?
So, the name for the street?
Yes.
So, I think, so what the legal advice we got was that it can be changed, but that is a Board of Selectmen prerogative.
Right.
So, I think we leave it as is for the sake of the plan. And then, I would strongly encourage yourselves, and then really the neighbors on the streets, to bring it up with the Board of Selectmen and talk about what they would, do they prefer leaving it as is or changing it? I think it makes total sense to change it, to have some sort of either re-street extension or something, something to distinguish all the different re-streets, but that would be up to the Board of Selectmen, and they want input from DPW, post office, things, people that would be affected, and mostly the neighbors, do they, do you want to change it or not? Very good. Okay. So, anyone have other questions before we see if any members of the public want to have input? Okay. Any members of the public want to have any input regarding this? Okay. Yes, come on up, come on up.
Can I just ask a question?
Come on up, come on up. Normally, you're pretty shy, so I don't know.
I know. Beth Williamson.
Address?
356 Ray Street.
Okay.
I just had a question with the draft of the approval of the cul-de-sac. I noticed on there, point 29 indicated that the cul-de-sac could be changed to a through street in the future, with the approval of the planning board, if, in connection with the redesign of the triangle at Ray Street, or if there's a compelling reason to change it.
Right.
And I'm just not familiar with the process, I guess. I just want to make sure that...
Yep, so what?
It's another process like this?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
So, I cannot imagine a situation, so any substantial change has to come back to the planning board for a modification.
Okay.
Okay, so, and I can't imagine that that would be something that would be deemed insubstantial. So, it would come back for basically the same process, have to outline what the need is for making the change. So, if for some reason traffic changed, or a school moved, or there was something significant or a reason, you know, found out that really nobody's been going down here at all, so there's, there's no reason not to make it a, you know, a through street. Something would have to change, and then it would come back, have this whole public process, public hearing, and we'd have to find that, that would support a modification.
Okay.
So, same public hearing.
All right, very good. Thank you.
So, are we ready for then a motion to close the public hearing?
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we will review the draft decision. Is it in our packet of materials, a hard copy? Yes.
Regarding the grass island, that would be maintained by homeowners association. That is not in there.
And then, and then we would take out number 14, the fire department?
Okay.
Or the fire department, we can leave in, the fire department has reviewed the plan. Just end it there.
Your first comment, the planning board vote was unanimous. It actually only requires three out of a five-person board for a subdivision, so...
So, we'll change that to three.
Yeah.
Thank you, John. So, number 14, are people comfortable with just the fire department has reviewed the plan? Email from William McCarthy did it August 14th, 2018. So, we can make that amendment, Monica? Number 17 says, "A subdivision plan conforms to town design and construction standards with the exception of waivers granted in Condition 17."
Oh, that's a missing number, eight.
Right.
The waivers are in...
25?
Yes, sorry about that.
Just on number two, just to type out the lotting sheet, there should be a closed, the, I can't even think of the word.
Quote.
Quote, quotation mark. Yes, thank you. It's been a long day. Thank you, Aaron. Is there any bond associated with this project, Monica?
There is an opening bond, which you'll see discussed.
33.
This is a very long decision.
15, okay.
Yes, point 33.
Okay.
Also, prior to, should, the release of ESTRO, the DPW will determine if there's any additional bond amounts that need to be submitted.
Monica?
Yes.
Condition 11 talks about 17 acres, and then...
Oh, did I type?
Under permit definitions, number 19, it talks about 26 and a half acres.
Yes, it should be 26 and a half acres.
Yeah, okay. Are we ready?
Yeah, I wanted to, I haven't gone through all the way, but is there anything in here that talks about the deeding of the open space?
No, there isn't.
Because there is open space that is going to be deeded, right?
Yeah.
Right, we did talk about that. Do we have a...
I think it's in there.
Yeah.
I'm trying to, oh, you know what?
It's a long one. They, paragraph 11, about those, this is the 17 acres to be conveyed to the town of North Andover.
Oh, so that's why that was...
Oh, that's why, yeah, okay.
Oh, yes. So, I should put 11 back to 17. I lost track of that.
Yeah, what I think you needed to have in there is, and I, again, I'll admit, I was going extremely slowly, so, but do you have anything in there? Normally, what we do is we put one or two conditions in, if there's a conveyance land of the town, that they have to give us the thing by a certain point in time.
Okay.
You know, and you might just go back to find another old decision that had open space and just copy the language off of that.
And when would be the appropriate time in terms of the, you know, when they get their first build, first occupancy, or, or just a set time?
I think it's prior to the final release, because it's not going to come directly, you know, into play with any of the individual lots, but we want to make sure we get it, because there have been a couple of times in the past where we've, we've missed that, or, you know, are there any easements from this?
There are easements in here.
Is there specific language about accepting the easements before a certain point?
Under easement documents, have it listed under, prior to the endorsement of plan, the easement documents will be submitted and registered with the Registry of Deeds.
Which, which one is that?
Let me see, under 34. And then, under 35, I have the applicant must submit to the town plan or conveyance of easements and utilities of Form M for all utilities and easements placed on the subdivision.
Okay, well, if you have that, 34 is good. Yeah, 35, yeah, okay.
But I think, I like a time period. I think that's appropriate.
That's fine, yeah.
I mean, all, everything within, I don't know, a year, is that appropriate?
Yeah.
So, I can place a year under...
Why don't we say a year, which can be extended, you know, with the agreement of all parties?
Monica, is there, I didn't notice, but is there a condition that the, the scope of tree cutting is, is going to be identified in the field? So, you put the, in order to avoid somebody going in half-baked, clear-cutting a lot, you want to, you know, put some staking around the limits of the, the work to be done, just to be safe.
Okay, so I can put a condition regarding tree clearing will be limited to...
Yeah, that's what you can find. It's, it's a pretty common one we've had in the past, yeah.
Okay.
I think, AV, the last one, I, I don't think it is two years. I think that's for special permits. I don't think that that's for subdivisions. Because I think you have longer than that.
Let me double-check that.
Maybe it's listed in there, but I didn't think that, that there was a provision for a two-year thing. I mean, if there is, great, there should be, but I know that's more the, you know, the provision for a special permit. But if there is in our rules or regulations of that, then, then it's fine.
Okay. I will double-check that, and I will strike that if I am incorrect. It is two, yeah.
So, can we get a motion to approve as amended, and also to allow the planning, the planning department to make the changes and sign off as, as the changes that we've approved?
So moved.
Can we get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of the decision as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Composed? Okay, unanimous.
Great.
Thank you to, thank you, Mr. Christensen, thank you to all the neighbors who came out throughout this process. I think clearly your input was heated and really made, made this into what looks to be a great project. All right, new discussions. 158 Coachman's Lane, Deborah Boudreau, waiver request for a watershed special permit under section 4.136 of the zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes to construct a 230-square-foot deck within the non-disturbance zone. This is in R1 zoning district. Please come forward.
I'm not Deborah, but I'm Dean.
All right.
Boudreau.
Well, that'll have to do. Dean Boudreau for 158 Coachman's Lane?
Exactly.
All right, Dean, why don't you tell us what you're looking to do?
Yeah, we, we'd like to put a deck on the back of our house to, you know, enhance what we've already been working on over the last 24 years at this house. We moved in and have been working on it ever since, and so this is kind of moving towards the end of a little bit of work outside. So, we'd like to put a, a deck that's coming off of an eat-in kitchen. It's above ground. It's probably about seven or eight feet above ground, and it's going over an existing patio that's a pea-stone patio. So, you know, we're hoping that, that this works for everybody. We seem to have tried to comply with all of the guidelines of the Wetlands Commission, and the guidelines, we've had the lot resurveyed again because the lines were, I think, over 10 years old, and so they came out and surveyed the property all over again, and, and my builder and his engineer have been able to come up with a structure that doesn't impact the no-build zone. No posts in that area, no topography disrupted, not a blade of grass changed or anything like that.
So, is it going to go more down?
Yeah.
Just about to ask a question.
And the location of it is in the back of the house, and it's off of a sunroom, and it's attached to the house, so it doesn't stick beyond the structure. It would be an ideal fit and location for this, this application.
In the pictures, is it going over the circular area with the bricks?
If you, if you look at the lower left-hand picture...
Okay, yeah.
You can see in that lower corner, there's a small door, there's a couple of windows, and you see that bow window there. So, the deck would, yes, the deck would go above that doorway, and that window would come out, and then a, you know, a door to the deck would come out. And it would go as far to the right as that drainpipe there where the house changes its position and moves. So, it doesn't extend, if you look at the top left-hand picture, you can see the stairway going up, that's a small sunroom there, and the deck would not extend beyond that. So, the line would run right straight from that point down 23 feet, and then turn back into the house by 10 feet. So, it's, it's, again, it's floating over the existing patio, it's, it follows the line of the house, it fits into a, a little, you know, nook in that back there, as you can see in that lower left-hand corner, and...
What kind of drainage would you have?
Well, the, there would be no structure underneath as far as retaining the water, so it would move through the floor to the existing ground where it's always been.
Monica? Comments?
So, again, as a, under the watershed special permit, he's applying for a waiver because there is very little ground disturbance. There's three sonotubes that will have to be hand-dug. It's going to be open, so there is no, no ceiling system or anything proposed. As you saw from the photos, the land is pretty, pretty flat, so there's no change in, in topography. And, so, yeah, it's not going to disrupt the topography, it's on-town sewer, so it seemed like it, it kind of fit the requirements under waiver request.
Roughly how far away the wetlands are from you, just to get a, it doesn't look like it's close because you got lawn there, but...
Yeah, no, it's, it's a full, you know, almost probably 65 feet, but the way the line moves, because the way the wetland is irregular, it, it touches where one of the sonotubes were supposed to go, but we've reconfigured the, the build and put a cantilever system in so that that footing is not in any of the 50-foot no-build zone. But, you know, it's, it's approximately, I would say, from the edge of what would be the proposed deck, it could possibly be, again, you know, 55, 60 feet to that mark that they have created in the wetlands.
The entire structure is within the 100-foot, but it's...
The entire house?
Yeah.
Yeah. Lucky the house is built...
I know. I know.
Will they be conservation?
They have to file a conservation for a small project, so I think you're going to submit by Thursday for their next, their next meeting.
Okay. Okay. Peter, anything? Comments, questions? Anybody else? It seems to me that this is what the...
I mean, I think this is fine. I think this is the kind of thing that the waivers are set up to do.
Exactly.
I feel like we have enough scrutiny to avoid a real problem, because Monica will be able to go out there and look, and they'll encourage an inspection, so I think it, it makes sense, it's the right balance.
I very much agree with John. This is the type of project that waiver and the small, and the small project in conservation is meant for. So, and it looks like you're doing all the things that you're supposed to do to make us not worry about it, so...
Yeah, we tried to, you know, work with the town and make sure that, again, we've been here for 24 years and raised a family here, so we understand, you know, what it's like to live here in North Andover, and being good neighbors, and respecting, you know, the wetlands and everything else. We've tried to stay within the guidelines.
Great. Can we get, can we get a motion to approve the waiver request?
I'll make such a motion.
A second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to approve the waiver request for a watershed special permit for 158 Coachman's Lane? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Right, thank you.
Approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good luck with conservation.
Thank you.
All right. 1661 Great Pond Road, Mark Levin. Request for insubstantial changes to the plantings approved as part of a watershed special permit dated July 2nd, 2013. Project is located within the R1 zoning district. All right, let's talk plants.
Yeah, we want to put in some native ground covers.
Let's, tell us who you are first.
I'm George from Northeast Landscape. This is Nadine, she lives at 1661 Great Pond Road.
Okay. Nadine, what's your last name?
Levin, L-E-V-I-N.
All right. All right, so, what would you like to do?
And we would like to put a whole bunch of bearberry ground covers and some witch hazels, service berries, and winterberries.
Okay, and why would you like to do that instead of what was part of the originally approved watershed special permit?
I don't understand, there was a, there was, I don't...
This is, you're looking for an insubstantial change?
Yeah.
So, something's changed?
Something has changed.
And, right.
We went and did a little bit of land clearing...
Yeah.
Of poison ivy and bittersweet, and this is to help correct that removal.
Did your fingers slap by the conservation commission?
I did.
I see. Monica, what can you tell us?
All right, so I'll just, we do some photos of existing conditions and I will pass as soon as my computer lets me. All right. So this is where we are actually as of today. So this is from Great Pond Road. You can see the existing tree cover, well, from the side of the road. And this is from the driveway here. Kind of scroll through so you can take a peek. Tell me to stop if there's anything you want to look at more closely. So their plan calls for the removal of four pine trees and the installation of, of several smaller trees and mostly ground cover. So there'd be approximately nine trees going in to replace any trees that are removed, and the rest is low-lying ground cover. So I guess my question for the board was, in terms of, right now, you have trees in front, they're taller trees, they're older trees. The question is, while new native plants would be going in, are you interested in seeing similar type plants or, or low, lower-lying plants, something you deem, something that's acceptable to be changed?
Well, I had a question. I thought I heard you say that trees would be planted, new trees, in place of the trees being removed. And when I, when I look at this list here, I might not be reading it right, but which of these are trees?
The Amalangier canadensis tree form two-inch.
It's a two-inch tree?
Two-inch. Two to two-and-a-half inch caliper in size, starting size.
Diameter?
Yes, of the truck, yeah.
And what's the height of those?
Planted, two to two-and-a-half will roughly be 12 to 14 feet tall.
I see. I appreciate you explaining what the two inches was. I thought that was a very low-lying tree.
It's wicked small. But they'll eventually mature to be about 20 to 25.
And I'm not up on my Latin, what type of tree is that?
It's called a service berry. Nice white flower in the spring, berry in the fall, birds love it.
And, and how tall does it grow?
About 20 to 25 feet on average.
And these trees that you want to, just put the obstruction to the lake and stuff? Or...
Well, the, the original growth was obstructing the lake. We wanted to kind of make something a little prettier to look at.
So what were the... The trees that were originally approved, did, do you know that in front, were these four red pines, is that essentially what we're talking about?
Yeah, the four red pines are actually, were identified as being diseased and we were going to remove them.
Okay, so, so according to the original permit, it would be replaced like-for-like essentially?
Sort of. It would just be replaced with another native species?
Okay. And, and this, this proposed tree is a native species?
Correct, sir. All the plants listed here are approved native species.
I think this is partly an insubstantial change, but I think it's also a correction of a cutting that was not supposed to have been done. So it's, it's more than just that.
Can you explain on one of these photos where the cuttings took place?
They were basically all vines and...
Can you take us to a photo that would show it?
Right behind you, actually.
So can you give us another photo that sees behind us? Maybe the photo from the property looking out at the lake? Can you see it there?
So there was a whole bunch of bittersweet and poison ivy vines just kind of masked in all along the ground and growing up the trees.
So you didn't remove any trees, you removed vines?
It was vines, bittersweet, poison ivy mostly.
And what else besides the bittersweet and poison ivy?
There might have been some Virginia creeper in there.
I see.
But it was mostly poison ivy and there's...
Right.
And so where do things stand with conservation, Monica? Was there, did they take a look at this? Did they...
Yes, it's outside of your jurisdiction, but considering that they are the plant growers, I wanted to ensure that their suggestions made sense. And so they were the ones that pointed out that any trees that would be removed would basically be replaced with nine less mature, mature plants and a lot of ground cover. So what I wanted to do was check with you to see what your feelings were on that, because if, if it's insubstantial, then that's one thing. If it requires more fire, you know, a more intense fire lane, that's something I wanted to get clarification on.
I take it the second thing is, the one with the quantity 100, that's the ground cover?
Correct, sir.
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, again, if, if you look at this, I think we have to put our hats on as, you know, protectors of the lake. And the idea was that if you have something that maybe doesn't look particularly attractive, but it does protect the lake because it stops up water and other stuff, if you take it out, you have to replace it with something. So the question becomes, is this sufficient ground cover to do what we would want it to do, I guess, is, is really what it comes down to. I have no idea, but...
Well, your normal bearberry, they'll spread, you know, four to eight feet in each direction. And I felt that with 100 of them, it would cover a good, almost 90% of the area of the debris that was removed. But I also incorporated some, you know, other native plants that will get a little bit bigger and help soak up some of that water, like the winter berry and the viburnums. And we were going to stagger them.
So can you just go down the list of five and give us the common names, the...
Sure, sure, okay. So the quantity four of the Amalangier canadensis, that's called a service berry. The Arctostestifilos is their ground cover bearberry. Viburnum trilobum is just your basic viburnum, cranberry, cranberry viburnum. The Hammamels virginiana is witch hazel. And the Alex fritisalata is winter berry.
And what does it mean number one and number five?
That's going to be the starting size. The ground cover will come in at a one-gallon pot.
I see.
The 24 to 30 will be the starting size of the viburnum and...
And that's 24 to 30 inches high?
Tall, most of them, yeah, tall and wide.
And how, how tall do they grow?
The viburnums are going to get, you know, eight feet, eight by eight. There are dwarf versions that only go like four to six. The virginiana is going to get the Hammamels, which hazel can get like 10 to 12. Flowers in February, too. And the fritisalata, there's various forms that we can choose that will grow anywhere from four to six to eight to 10.
And you do a lot of work in town?
Yes, sir.
So I, help me understand, do you, do you understand what our concern is with this location?
With the runoff going into the lake?
Correct.
Was there any ground cover plantings as part of the, the original special watershed permit?
I'm not aware of the special water permit, the previous one.
I'll bring up the approved plan, because you did use the, the approved plan and you, right, and you over, you overlaid your plan on top of the approved plan. So why don't I bring that up? So this was the, the underlying plan was the one that was approved back in 2013, which shows, you see the limit of clearing here in the house and the driveway. So basically over, I don't know if you can see my, my pointer, but this was the limit of clearing. And then where you want to do your plantings is outside of the limit of clearing.
Can you see the person?
I can't, I see the person.
Let me see if I can make it better.
I see it down at the bottom.
So it's over, over, can you see it? I'll make it even bigger.
It disappears, I think.
Yeah.
So why don't you refer us to some writing on there so that we can...
Okay, so like where all those like circles are, is where I proposed to put, yes, right there, sir, yeah.
That's your suggestion now?
Correct.
And where are the four trees you're bringing down?
The four trees are more on the right side, closer to the fire hydrant, yes.
And where is the original limit?
So the limit is the, oh, my cursor here, do you see like the, the little bumps, the usual, the tree line here? So that was the, the limit of work that extended up the driveway and around the house here.
So are you saying this?
Yeah. That was the proposed limit of work. So it comes down here next to the driveway and then ends over at the entrance.
A lot of it was growing up the trees, so there wasn't really a determinable height because it wasn't really like a woody shrub. A lot of it was, you know, kind of like waist-high and just viney.
Yeah. Sounds like my yard. If, no. I mean, if they were going to do planting in this area, yes. Any type of planting that's in, that's outside of the limit needs to be reviewed by...
So there's two issues. One, it was removed, but second, actually three. Second, plantings, and third, you're asking to bring down four trees?
Yes, that are, were identified as being diseased.
The, the bylaw does allow for removal of dead and dying, dying, dangerous trees, but those need to be replaced.
Right, and the proposal is not replacing them?
Right, this is something different.
Right. And can I ask why you're not interested in replacing the trees, the four trees with like trees?
Aesthetic value to the homeowner?
I just wanted to make it look pretty and that's, if the trees are dying, that's why I want to remove them, but...
No, no, I understand that part, but why not replace them with healthy trees instead of shrubs?
I don't know. Is this something I need to do? If it's something I need to do, I will. I mean, I didn't know if, I didn't know if that was something that...
I thought the service berries were a suitable replacement being a tree. Not an evergreen, but a native deciduous tree.
Which was the first thing you talked about, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
So could you do what you're planning now and add the, and add four red pines back
We, we could, we might, I might make a different, other native evergreen suggestion that would maybe look a little bit nicer?
Okay. I mean, so our concern is, so... Placing dead trees makes, dying trees makes sense. Our concern is to make sure that we have the right type of trees to continue to protect the, the water from runoff and stuff like that. So that's why we're concerned about that, so...
And the, the service berry is actually a, a good wetland kind of plant, sucks up a lot of water, likes it.
So great, a little more than merry.
I take that and, and I, the ground cover, native species, I think it's great, flowering in February, who doesn't like that? That's fantastic. I, I think for me, if there's an option to, in addition to this, replace the four trees of some comparable size tree, I mean, that would grow to the comparable size. I'm not saying bring in a...
I can get trees that big.
Yeah, I, no, no, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that the homeowner pay for that. But if there's an option to also put in those tall trees, which I think you were suggesting, I'd be completely comfortable with that.
And would they need to be evergreen or could I do something like a festiget oak that'll get 60, 80 feet tall, but not be, you know, evergreen? Because a lot of the evergreens, they just drop all their foliage because of the, the lack of sun.
I'm, I'm, you know, a like-sized tree, would grow to like-sized tree. Native species would be great.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of...
If that's an option.
There's a lot of different options for that.
Yeah.
Could go maple or oak.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, are people comfortable with that?
I am.
How tall, how tall will the service berries get?
20 to 25 feet on average.
25 feet.
And they're, they're more kind of like, fluffier?
Yeah, they're more like, you know, they kind of grow like that. Their, their, their original form is a bush form, but this has been grown and grafted as a tree.
Yeah.
So it will get a little bit bigger and it'll be kind of like, kind of like that.
Well, I'm primarily concerned about soil stabilization. I don't care about the height personally. So if, if the proposed, what's proposed is, makes for a, 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 you know, that stabilizes that soil in front of this house and, and soaks up a lot of water to prevent runoff, I'm, I'm fine with this. But if there's other concerns that warrant a change, I'm for that, too.
Yeah, I, I'd just be more comfortable with repl, with adding the trees to it.
That's what I, I'm good to go with that.
So, so why, we... So what do we need to make a motion to find an insubstantial change, is that right?
Yes, and I can alter, what I can do is when I, so I have a, you know, I write up the insubstantial change, which I think I kind of, I wrote something up just to, just to do that, but I can add a condition that four native trees would be, would be planted in replacement of the four pines.
Okay.
And then if you're, as long as it's native and you find that, you know, something you're willing to approve, then I can, I can sign off on that.
Okay.
And, and this is the four trees on top of the service berries?
Yes.
Right, so that the, the list of five different species you have?
Yep.
And then the four, and then four native trees to replace those pines? I think then we're good with that as an insubstantial change.
And appreciate your thoughtful approach of what would work here.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks. Next time, let us know when you're...
Do you want to make the motion, Peter?
So moved.
All right, so, so that would be the motion to approve the insubstantial change at 1661 Great Pond Road with the, as proposed in the paperwork and with the addition of four native trees of like kind to replace the, the four trees that are taken down that are diseased?
Yes.
Okay, seconded, anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right. Four High, we'll do Four High, can we do Four High Street and 21 High Street together or should we do them separate? We'll do them separate, all right. Four High Street, RCG North Andover Mills LLC, waiver request for preliminary master plan under section 18.8 of the Town of North Andover zoning bylaw. Monica, could you bring up section 18.8?
Sure.
So we could look at that while we're getting a...
And I think that section, John, didn't you say?
Discussion.
That section was updated, so if she's going to pull it up, it...
Yeah. 195 18.20 C2?
Yes.
Look at the recodified, everybody. Why we went through that process?
Exactly.
All right.
We apologize.
It's been in effect since the last town meeting. Hi.
Hi, I'm David Steinberg from RCG LLC. We are the manager on behalf of RCG West Mill NA LLC, who owns the three parcels of land associated with Four High Street. And what we're here to ask for is a waiver of the preliminary master plan that is required on the Sub District A permitting. And the reason why we want to do that is as we wrap up a number of permits that we did to start developing the West Mill property after that acquisition, which we did under the prior zoning, but had worked with this, this board and the town to, to get the Sub District A zoning into place. Now we want to codify all that under the Sub District A. And we've gone through, we've really been working on track with the master plan as it's been presented several times. And I think we sort of showed a, a presentation here that showed dating back to 2014, actually working down the same path. And we've been taking multiple steps and, and been before this board a number of times to ask for permits associated with those steps. But now, as we essentially have completed the work associated with the mill buildings that are, that are part of West Mill, we wanted to get all this work moved onto the Sub District A master plan and proceed with what would be the phased development of the site. And under the, the Sub District A zoning, you can ask for a waiver of the master plan to move in to a definitive plan that would sort of expedite talking about the next steps with this board. And... And I don't know if we want to refer specifically to that and, and, or you have specific questions, but I figured, actually, maybe I would just give a quick update on where we are with the mill buildings. We've completed all the site work that was associated with expanding all the parking areas that were closer to the buildings. Obviously, we started with taking down a large manufacturing building. It was over eighty thousand square feet. And once we opened that up and did our, um, expansion of the parking areas, um, which, you know, helps us to surplus the more remote parking areas for future development. We've been successful in essentially filling up the buildings, uh, with a number of uses and then I'm sure many of you have been by the site. On the West Mill side, it's really been in my mind a big success. We added the Wine Lab, the Jade Restaurant, a number of sort of boutique retail and medical and wellness uses through the buildings, a lot of office space, the thirty-nine apartments that were added along Water Street. We are comfortable now that it's, uh, the complex is over ninety percent occupied. In fact, our office across both sides of, uh, the entirety of the mill complex are about ninety-four percent occupied. The apartments are a hundred percent occupied. So really now that we've come to a complete version of what we were trying to create, we understand actually specifically what the parking requirements are, whether we were successful in, in meeting that with the new parking areas. And so we think it's time to codify all that, start to move forward with, with, um, under the definitive plan component of the district.
I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
Yes.
Really just love seeing it and using it and a lot of credit to how you've done it.
Thank you.
So can, in order to qualify for a waiver, says that you need, see that the waiver is. Such waiver furthers one or more of the purposes of section one ninety-five eighteen point nine. So can you tell us why granting a waiver and not going through the full master plan, preliminary master plan and going right to a definitive, which will still come back before, um, why that furthers one of the purposes in the bylaw?
So if we can, if we can pull that up. We in eighteen twenty now?
So eighteen point nine has a whole bunch of purposes.
Yep.
Eighteen twenty C. C two.
That's not, I think, what we're talking about, is it?
That one just discusses the minor nature.
Yeah, so this is not a minor nature.
No, if I could add to that, Charles, I'm a law attorney for RCG. The, the fact that it's a, the, what we mean by minor nature is the fact that this master plan has been reviewed by the board as part of the prior master plan process before the zoning changed. And since we're not changing anything substantially from what was originally, uh, evaluated by the board back at that time, we're simply, uh, just bringing our old master plan and applying it to the new Sub District A, um, bylaw simply to conform it to the new Sub District A provisions, which we had discussed with the planning board several years back, back in twenty fifteen to specifically tailor the zoning around this mill complex. So to that extent, we feel it's a, it's minor in nature because it's the same exact plan that was, uh, seen by the board in twenty fourteen.
I, I'm sorry, I, to be honest, I'm struggling with this one because I think you do a great job. I, I think what's going on in the mills is fantastic. But it doesn't feel minor. I mean, it actually feels pretty major. And I agree with you. You guys have been before us many times, have kept us in the loop all the time. But if this is minor, then I, I guess I'm not sure when we would ever.
So I think it gets maybe, if, if I'm following here, and I might not be, but if I'm following, it gets to what is minor? Is it the?
The project?
The project or is it the, is the change in the plan minor? I think your argument is the change in the plan is minor, therefore it meets the requirement for a waiver. And I think what I'm hearing here, and frankly, my reaction was, gee, this looks like a pretty big project. How could it be minor? And so it gets to what is it that's minor?
I mean, the whole idea when we were draft, I mean, just in terms of some history on this, I mean, the whole idea for drafting this provision in at the time was simply because we already had a fairly detailed master plan, uh, that was approved by the planning board back in twenty fourteen. And so simply, uh, applying the same exact master plan, we would consider to be minor, a minor activity.
Why wouldn't we write, why wouldn't you just refile? If it's the same, then why wouldn't we just refile that?
Why? Because what we're doing is we're consolidating all the old prior approvals, which are now arguably pre-existing lawful, uh, non-conforming because we have the new, uh, zoning in place currently. So the idea is, is simply to take the existing, all the existing improvements and just adopt them and, and put them into the Sub District A to clean that up. Because there are a series of approvals under the old zoning and what we're simply doing is, is consolidating those prior approvals as part of the definitive plan, uh, so that we're acting and, and conditioning everything under this, uh, West Mill complex, under the Sub District A bylaw.
Right.
Which currently is under the old downtown overlay district.
Okay, but I guess, I guess, I guess I'm, maybe I'm missing something and again, it's been a long day already. Why, what is the hardship for doing a preliminary master plan and going through?
Well.
What's the need for the waiver, other than?
Well, simply, it's, it's simply, uh, we, we consider it ministerial because the planning board is going to have a very substantive review at the definitive plan stage.
But that's always the case, right?
True, but, but otherwise, uh.
Yeah, I mean, the analogy that I would make a little bit here is to, you know, when we do subdivisions, that in the case of the subdivision, you can submit a preliminary plan and then follow up with a, a definitive plan. Although in this day and age where we haven't had very many subdivisions, but you don't actually technically have to do it. But sometimes it's good for the planning process. I think here, and we may have set that logic up in the bylaw originally for that purpose is to have a, before we went and did anything that was by itself, we would have a broad overview of everything. I think the fact that it's already been done and it's not going to change, in my mind, is, is sufficient mitigation. I mean, it's, you know, let's get at, we have the process for a reason, for a value, just, you know, not just to submit something for the sake of submitting it. I think what we want to see is what is being proposed in the long term so that any piece of it, we understand the context. But I, if nothing fundamentally is changing, I think we have that.
And it's, I mean, the language also says that, uh, the planning board deems the submission of a master plan unnecessary. And that's, that's the, the, uh, the initial language of the, of the provision because it's minor. And so, um, basically, um, it is, we feel, what we felt is it's really unnecessary, that step is unnecessary because we're just going to come back to the board and present the same plan, but subject to the Sub District A requirements.
Yeah, this seems, I, I agree with John here. This seems like an overly formalistic to make them jump through when this plan has been in place for years and has been executed on. It, it, it seems like this is just a, a formality to get things cleaned up. And I don't hear that there's any sort of changes to the proposal or their master plan that requires us to do that sort of deep thinking about it at a preliminary stage before we have people invest a lot of time and effort into the, the final ones. So to me, this seems insubstantial.
And plus, we're, we're essentially, I mean, it's, it's the same exact plan that, that the board has reviewed and.
Any thoughts? Well, two. One, have, have you seen this before? I don't, I, or John, have you seen this before a waiver in this section?
Not, not quite like this. I mean, I think the intent was, uh, as Jen suggested, is to get a good, before you start going and doing individual things, get a real plan in place. And that's why we put in the, the bylaw and it was, it, it was a complex bylaw because what you're trying to do is you're trying to deal with the site, but also conform to the overall zoning. And so we, we put in some provisions there that were a little bit unique.
And East Mill and West Mill are the only properties that are within the sub-district, so it's not an issue of, of precedent here.
It's under D one, it does say that, I mean, it sounds like this is anticipation of, of the creation of a larger plan. And so, um, you know, it says within sixty days receipt of the plan of the town, of the, in approving the, a master plan, the pl- the planning board may suggest modifications or changes in anticipating of the filing of the definitive plan. And so if nothing's changing at this point, then when the definitive plan comes in, then that's where the real work is going to take place. That's, and so that's in reading, in reading, it just seems like if nothing's changing, then it's time to move forward.
Right, so it gives you a chance to look at it beforehand, especially if it's something that's new and make some suggestions before you get to definitive plan and have to really say yes or no. I, I get that. I just don't read the bylaw the way. I think what John and Jen are saying makes sense. I just don't think the bylaw actually says what they're. They're being logical, I'm being rigid. It says due to the minor nature of the proposal, I, I just don't think it's minor. I think they're right.
Yeah, it's how you defend, it's how you define minor. I mean, it's, uh.
I, I respectfully don't think so. I think that's creative, but, um, but I see what they're saying.
I, I agree where John and Jen are coming out.
Yeah.
Although I appreciate what you're saying, I hate to be jumping through for formal reasons.
It's, yeah, um.
And especially when we've got a great track record.
And, and I, I agree with all that. I, I just don't like to bend the way I see it because then we do it in the future and then we do it again and then we do it again, especially for people who are doing a good job. But, okay, um, so Aaron, any thoughts before we vote?
No, in concurrence with.
Okay, um, so then can, this is for, so can we get a motion to approve the waiver request for a preliminary master plan under section eighteen point eight of the Town of North Andover zoning bylaw for Four High Street, RCG North Andover Mills LLC?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Uh, eighteen point twenty.
C two.
C two.
This one should be for West.
I'll make that motion.
For, for West Mill NA, just want to make sure.
West Mill.
First, if you West Mill NA.
Okay.
LLC.
Under eighteen point two C, so that's not correct on our, okay, on eighteen, uh, well, it's, well, it's technically one ninety-five eighteen point two O C two. Okay, it's been motioned second. And all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Me. Uh, so passes four to one. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Um, let's go to the next one. Twenty-One High Street, One High Street, RCG North Andover Mills LLC requests for insubstantial changes to the site plan special permit, plan development district special permit and parking special permit dated January sixteenth, twenty eighteen within the IS zoning district.
All right, so this one comes under sort of the same category as cleanup, so we can start to move ahead. On the West Mill site, um, the context is that, um, all our filings for East Mill previously done under the PDD dis- PDD zoning. And what was shown were three parcels of land, one of which extended across the West Mill land. It was the old railroad parcel. So it's a parcel of land that starts on the east side, east mill side of the street extends to the west mill side of the street. It has always been essentially controlled by the owners of West Mill through easements for parking. And, um, once RCG West Mill NA, uh, or once RCG as manager sort of got to manage both parties, it seemed logical that one party would sell that piece of land back to the other party. It has no use, um, for the east mill. It has no real impact on any of the, um, you know, zoning information that was required for the PDD and east mill. It was just a legacy of a historical, um, railroad easement, uh, on the opposite side of the street. And so one of the things that we intend to clean up is to transfer, rather than have easements over that parcel from West Mill, or easements, uh, that West Mill would have easements over east mill's land, is just eventually that land would be conveyed. And that would be, um, logically contiguous with the rest of the West Mill development. So in order to do that, we wanted to make sure we took it out of any of the, uh, permits, I guess, that were associated with the east mill. And that change would just free up that piece of land. And, and some of those, um, if, if you look at the zoning information provided on the plan, the civil design group plan, all the requirements of that PDD, uh, are still more than fulfilled by the piece of land that is on the east mill side of the street.
When would that conveyance take place?
If we get the approvals, probably sometime, it'd probably be similar to the time as we go through our definitive plan, that that sale would go through, but it's flexible. I mean, we obviously can't do it until we get it freed up from the east mill side. But we're prepared to make the conveyance whenever it's convenient.
Monica, does the plan department have any position on this?
No, in terms of, uh, cleaning up so they could take the next steps, this seemed like it, it was logical to us.
Yeah. My only concern is that I'd want the conveyance by a certain time, just again, it makes sense to do and to prove this so you guys can go forward. I just really want to prove it and then not have that happen.
Yep.
Or if it doesn't happen with a certain period of time, then let's come back and talk about that, something along those lines.
I'm comfortable with that. Would you, with six months or something, just to get it done and recorded and?
Okay, I remember that, okay.
Whatever it is.
All right, so then, um, let's, we can, I have to vote to have that as an insubstantial change, with the condition that the conveyance be done with six months, within six months. And if something happens with, then you're not going to make that, just come back and request a further insubstantial change and tell us why. Okay, uh, so a mo- can I get a motion to approve the request for an insubstantial change at Twenty-One High Street, uh, One High Street, RCG North Andover Mills LLC, with the condition of conveyance within six months? Anybody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
When, uh, on the residential piece that we approved, when are you going to break ground on that?
It looks like April one, depending on how the winter season is. But, um, we were delayed by a few things, including National Grid having to remove some poles in the back and, uh, so it pushed us out of the season. We didn't want to start.
Good.
Okay, uh, let's do working group, Old Center zoning review, update on the Old Center zoning review. Who's speaking to that? John? Peter, Monica?
Well, let me just sort of start with the context, and I think we've talked about it once, is that last year before the town meeting, members of the historical society came to the planning board and floated a, a concept of a rezoning part of the, um, historical society property in the old center to a business use because of the, um, desire to refurbish and reuse the, uh, the old textile and print museum for a commercial purpose. And at that time, we said that that was premature, uh, that there was too much that was unknown and that we ought to put together a, uh, a, a study group to, uh, look at the possibilities, uh, more broadly and just make sure we make a, a more reasoned, uh, decision. And so over the past, uh, six months, I think it's close, we started in July and ended in October. Uh, we, we've had a series of beatings of the study group, which has had basically virtually every constituency, I think, in the old center. There and there were quite a few, uh, residents that were there as well. And I thought it, in general, it was a very good process where I. And I thought it, in general, was a very good process where I think people, you know, I don't think in the end, when the smoke cleared, we were all in agreement on everything, but I think everybody respected everybody's position. And we put a lot of information at the table that wasn't there before. But in terms of the process is, we looked primarily at the textile museum, but we also looked at the Old Center more broadly and got a lot of feedback from people about how the Old Center works. It doesn't work in the types of uses that would work in the Old Center. Peter, I don't know if you wanted to go and talk about a little bit the process that went through on the textile museum itself and what, where it's ended up.
I'll try. So I think the main purpose of this group was to collect public input, and I think we, as John said, had good public input. I think there was general agreement that something has to change and general agreement that the Historical Society has, you know, not been in a position to be a very good landlord in terms of taking care of the property. I think there's general agreement on that. And I think we had two sort of substantive ideas put forth. One was to turn it into townhouses, the existing building with the facade remaining the same, the rear storage area to be demolished. And I, I think there was a sentiment among, you know, maybe not, not all, but some of the public input that the proposal put forward, if, if, if this, if that option were to be chosen, that, that that would be the best, the best approach. But I would also say that at the end of that last meeting, there was an alternate approach that was discussed, which I thought got a lot more energy as the meeting went on, that an alternate approach would be to remove the building and preserve it as an empty parcel with the notion that if there is another early period house, that would only be preserved if it could be relocated, much like, what is it, the Leland House?
Leland House.
That was relocated to Court Street, that if that were to happen again in town, where an early period house is at risk, that it is hard to find a suitable parcel. And my understanding of, that was quite a challenge with the Leland House. And what better place than to have a parcel at the ready on the Old Common? And that this alternative potential use, I think the discussion at the end of the last meeting was that that was probably the more strategic approach and probably a rare opportunity for the town to take that type of action with potentially long-range historic preservation value for the common, for the town, and very forward-looking as a way to perhaps preserve another first or early period structure that would otherwise be lost. And I was struck that although the proposals to put in townhouses, I think was warmly received in large part because of the tremendous confidence in the proposer, another builder who has a sterling track record. In spite of that very warm reception, I thought that by the end of the meeting, the alternative potential use of preserving the parcel for future historic use, I, I thought got some serious attention by the group. And, and also, I think the group concluded that this committee was not a decision-making committee. We looked at the charter. This was a committee that was formed for the purpose to be a forum for the public to provide input, and I think we agreed that we had done that. And the discussions, including the one-off related, is, I think, recorded in the minutes.
So of those...
Is that what you were looking for, John, in terms of summary?
Yeah, no, I think you, you said it very well.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's great. So of those two proposals, the latter one, would that require this board to do anything? If it was going to be ra, if the building was going to be raised and just left its open space under the current ownership, it seems to me we don't have to do anything, correct? No zoning changes?
Well, there was, there was discussion if, if that, and you're going to have to elaborate on this, John, if that alternative approach were to be taken, how could it be protected for this special use of holding it for a potential relocated early period house? And I, I don't know that we really concluded how that could be done, but some care would have to be exercised, and I'm not quite sure what the mechanisms are.
But isn't, I mean, can't they, if they wanted to raise it today, couldn't they just do that? Why, I mean...
The Historical Society could do that today, yes.
Right.
Yes, they obviously are not, you know...
But that's, I mean, if they wanted to do that and then...
I mean, I think, to Peter's point, it's more that if you did go down that path, you would have probably a, you would draw up some legal papers to, to come to that conclusion, you know, to that effect.
Sure, that, that would be...
Yeah, but that would be separate from that.
Right, yeah.
And you're right that technically it does not require anything per se from the planning board.
Right, you could put a historical covenant on it with the specifics that it'd be used either for some sort of historical building or to, or to do exactly what you said. Not sure you'd want an SSI limit it that way, but that's the decision for the owners. Okay, if it were to go the other way in terms of the townhomes, then there would need to be a zoning change, correct?
There would need to be a zoning change, correct, yeah. So we would be involved.
Okay, so then, and I think they're both really interesting ideas, and, but it seems to me that from the planning board's perspective, then we don't have to do anything until we're told what the owners want to do, right?
Can I ask some questions?
Or give in, unless we want to give input.
Yeah.
I'm curious, because when this was here before, and I, I can see a lot of familiar faces who I know worked on the, the committee, one of the proposals that the Historical Society brought to us was potentially getting a business in to generate some sort of revenue that would help maintain the building and then also maybe fund some of the Historical Society's, you know, their operations. Was that something that was not feasible or how did the discussions around that go? Because that's clearly not one of, like, that doesn't appear to be one of the two things that are in front of us. I'm just curious how that discussion went.
No, right, no, that's...
And I apologize if it's in all the minutes, I just haven't read them yet.
As, as we went through the process, you know, we, we took a walk through the Old Center, looked at everything, looked, you know, just so that we had the, the broad context, but we did clearly focus mostly on this building. And we talked about what can you do? And in the early meetings, I think the devil's advocate position was, how do you know you're going to get a commercial use for that building that is going to work feasibly economically? So in other words, it's, it's going to cost a ton of money to refurbish the building. Who is going to come in and do that? Could you get the rents to do that? Could you get all that sort of stuff to do it? So it, even though it was partly a, you know, kind of a zoning issue, it, it's an economic issue as well. And in a couple of meetings, we went and, you know, at one meeting, I think the Historical Society proposed two or three different alternatives in terms of different commercial type things, a single proponent, you know, a single business, and then one was multi-businesses. And then the third option was, was a residential. The, the Historical Society came back and said, forget about the business, we think the residential is the one that makes the most sense, and that's what they came back and pitched the last meeting. And as, as Peter said, I think it met with some support, certainly from members of the Historical Society. I'm not so sure it had broad-based support at all, in fact, much any support from people that lived in the area, but that's, that's a different story. You know, that's something if, if, if they do decide to come forward with this, that we would have to, you know, deal with that as part of the process, so.
So is there any, anyone from the struggle side that wants to kind of tell us what you guys are thinking at the moment? I, I mean, this is, at this point, I think it's just kind of educational. I think this is a great process and I'm glad that people went through it, but where's, where your heads at? And you're wearing two hats in this situation.
No, no, I'm, I'm just wearing the one. This is Tom Zerico, sixteen sixty-five Great Pond Road, speaking as a, as a resident, as the proposer, if you will, not as a representative of the Historical Society. I appreciate the comments, by the way, and I think the process was, was, was productive in, in going through and sort of focusing on potential uses and disposition of the property. You know, I think one of the things that, that seems to be a little bit in the background here is that it's not a town building. And I, we, we're still dialoguing this, I think collectively, as if it's like the Brad Street School or something. And I think, you know, ultimately, as with any property, with my house, with your homes, if somebody wants to put a school where your house is, it's kind of up to you first and foremost to decide, you know, the, the owners of the property have to consent one way or another to what gets done. And I think with this building, what, what the dialogue is coming down to ultimately is, is the building important? And to who? To the Historical Society, I think, and again, talking as a, as how outside, I think it's very important. History, I mentioned this at one of the public meetings, history doesn't just begin at a hundred. If every house around the common was knocked down in its fifty-ninth year, then none of them would be there. And I'm not trying to make, make light of that, but to a lot of people, this building is significant. I talk about it with every person I see. I'm on the common every single day for multiple hours, and every person I see, I talk to about that building. There are people who would just as soon see it gone. There are a lot of people who know that as part of North Andover. And I think the dialogue ultimately is, is the building important and to who? Primarily, the Historical Society gets to decide if the building stays. And then the other dialogues of, you know, the disposition, then they can be ferreted out. Anyway, I just wanted to add that, that perspective. My proposal was based in a belief that this building is worth saving. It's always been there, it was built the year I was born. Yeah, I'm that old. So I'm not historic either, yet. But, you know, but it does mean something to a lot of people. And there are others, and I know to others, particularly in the neighborhood, that it's not so important. But everybody did move there when it was there, and there was no promise that that was going to be different. So again, just trying to keep the perspective, that was it. And if Historical Society wants to comment, that's okay.
So this is, this can be over to anyone. Again, I think at the end, maybe I'd like to hear from, or Chris, if you want to go, what I want to hear at the end at least is what you're looking, the Historical Society, who's the owner of the building, is looking for from us.
I can, I...
Do you want to, do you want to tell us that? Because that's the big question. And I'm happy to have, continue to have this discussion about best uses and should it stay or should it go. It's all an interesting and worthwhile discussion, but in the end, if we're going to ask to be taking the action, that's kind of where I want to really focus.
Chris Allen, three Belmont Street.
Hi.
Love being on this side. Normally, it would be Stan up here talking to you. He couldn't make it tonight, so he asked me to come and speak instead. He is the president of this Historical Society, and we had a discussion over, over what he would say. So I do feel that I can be a representative of the Historical Society, because we had a long conversation of, you know, about the meetings that you had, which, by the way, he echoed your sentiments about how productive he thought that they were. He has a little bit of different view of the meetings. What was surprising to him in those meetings was that it looked like the only property that had issues with zoning was the Rogers Building. By the way, that is what we call it, is called the Rogers Building, that's the name of the building. So that was, and that's why a lot of the focus was just on that building, because that was the only one that seemed to be in the predicament of what can we do with it with it zoned the way that it is. And so Stan's sentiments are really three things. One of them is preservation. The Historical Society is very interested in preserving the building. It was built to represent the heritage of the mills. It was built right, I believe, a year after the, the common came into existence, so it really has been part of the common for as long as the common has been there. So the Historical Society feels pretty strongly about that. The society also wants to be good neighbors, and that's why it's been such a thoughtful and long process. As you, let's say it's been, you know, several months, the working group really looking to see what do the neighbors think, a real true effort to say, you know, how can we, what can we do there that is, is the best solution, the most comfortable solution for everyone involved? Not everyone's going to be happy, but what can we do to make it as wonderful, as well, as good as we can? And we believe that the, the solution brought forward by Tom and his proposal to turn this into townhouses was really a wonderful solution. We have a lot of faith in Tom, obviously, and it seemed like the lowest impact in the environment, the lowest impact as far as traffic, as far as altering the building, the overall environment of the common. So we really look at it as a wonderful solution. And to that end, the Historical Society has formally voted to put forward his proposal. So it's not that we are weighing any other proposals at this moment, this is it. So this is what will be brought forward to the planning board through Tom. It is, it is out of our hands, it will be in Tom's hands to put forward his proposal and hopefully go through the process of trying to get it zoned properly for that to happen. If by some reason that it didn't happen, like town meeting came around, it didn't get changed, the thought that we might knock down the building and do something else is actually kind of on the outside of what the Historical Society is actually even able to do. We couldn't knock it down and put something else up. We can't afford to do that. We couldn't do that like a parking lot. We could not maintain a parking lot. We could not pay to plow a parking lot. I mean, that, that just simply is not what the society is interested in doing. If someone said, we want to buy your property, we have, you know, we have a million dollars, we want to buy your property, I mean, that's something that we would consider, but it's not something the Historical Society is likely to do. And where we stand right now, Tom's proposal is, is what, where we are going. There are other options down the road that are in keeping with the zoning in the property. I mean, there could be a church in that building, there could be a daycare in that building, and I believe those options are ones that would not need any zoning change at all and which would be within the purview of the Historical Society to do, within the, obviously, the constraints of the zoning. So that is, if everything fell through with what Tom put forward and, you know, we can't work it out, a year goes by, we'll just unfortunately have to put a fence around the building, wait until we have the funds to do something different and probably work within the zoning and, you know, seek something that is appropriate for a, an R three property. Do you have questions?
No, well, so I would just say, I mean, to me, I think it's, the Historical Society, it's your property, whatever project you put before us, we'll consider that.
Yeah.
I don't think it's really, this board's prerogative to tell you what project to put forward.
Appreciate that.
I would ask that if you're going to request a zoning change, that you certainly meet with the planning department and talk about it. And I think the consensus, at least when we started talking about this last year, was to do the least invasive, the least amount of zoning changes as we can to facilitate a project that we like.
Yeah, and, and we are, we are, we are, we're really on, on point with that. I believe it's a change from an R three to an R four?
Well, I'm, so...
Something like that?
I don't, I don't think, I don't even have to put it out right now, if you can figure that out.
Yeah, yeah, down the road.
I just don't want a, I wouldn't want to see a broad, hey, let's just change the zoning and we'll figure it out.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I want it to be specifically tailored to what's being proposed, because really, I don't think we'd consider anything that gives you a lot of balance, it's going to be...
And, and that is, and that's perfectly reasonable. As a matter of fact, one of the issues that the board is wrestling with right now are the many properties that they own, the buildings that they own. And it used to be that when there was, you know, a building that needed to be preserved, the solution for it was to have it go under the purview of the Historical Society. Historical Society would own a building, and that was the way a building could be preserved. That, that sort of thing has changed. When you look at some of the houses around that area, it is the owners of those homes now that are restricted in what they can do with those homes. And they're preserved because they, they can't change the outsides. They, you know, there's a lot of things they can't do and change. They, you know, there's a lot of things they can't do and change. And so, you know, buildings don't have to be owned by the Historical Society to be preserved and, you know, and to look the way they've always looked, you know, and to be, I don't know, just like you say, no big disruption, no big change. And so that's really what we're looking for. And I don't know whether you have seen Tom's proposal or not, but it's very carefully laid out. I mean, I think he did a wonderful job, and it is really all about preserving the building as it looks right now and having whatever caveats we have to put into our agreements or our contracts to keep it that way, to make sure that it doesn't, you know, get changed down the road, the outside doesn't get changed, that it's in-
Historical, at least, again, just my opinion, I think I said this when we started, that historical covenants would be appropriate.
Yeah, and that's a wonderful thing, because that really is a way for us to preserve the building.
Right. Runs with the land, could be done in cooperation with the State Historic Commission.
Yes, exactly.
So.
So that's our intent. That's really, really, really what the Historical Society wants to do. And as I said, they have voted on it, so this is the direction that the Historical Society is heading right now. That's where we're at.
So I'm going to ask one question, and then I'm going to let other people comment, and then we'll get back. Timeline?
That would be a better question for Mr. Serico.
Timeline, and then we'll get to anyone else who wants to weigh in.
Real quickly, in terms of the zoning considerations, I mean, there's multiple ways of approaching this kind of a proposal. It may or may not be a zoning change request. It might alternatively be a change in the definition, or in a definition within the bylaws that allows this, not, without changing the zone. You know, for instance-
Well, that's the same on the bylaw, you're going to have to change-
Change the zoning bylaw. It requires a zoning bylaw change, but not a change to the zone necessarily, John. It doesn't have to go from an R3 to an R4, an R2. It doesn't necessarily have to be a change to the zone.
Why is that? I mean, it's still getting-
It's still a town meeting, but the point, I just wanted to clarify that, because it isn't necessarily moving it into a different zone. It may be just a definition or a piece of a definition of the zone or of one of the overlays to allow it, but also to constrain it. And that's the delicate balance. We've had some discussion about that already. We've already drafted a couple of things to look at. In terms of the timing, I'd like to get in front of this board next month, at least initially, to have some discussion about those zoning alternatives and to refine the proposal, refine the plan, and work towards May town meeting for consideration. We've already gone out and flagged wetlands, except for the fact that we've had, you know, 26 days of rain in October and early November, we would have done all of the existing site condition survey, but it hasn't been able to be done. We expected that to be done last week, but that should be done for a more intelligent discussion in December, whenever we can arrange that.
Okay. So, yes, sir. I've been waiting patiently. Come on up.
My name's Doug Evans. I'm at 114 Academy Road. I have been a member of the Historical Society in the past, and I purchased the house we live in now approximately 10 years ago. At that time, there had been a movement by a builder that had purchased the property prior to our acquiring the property, who intended to turn 114 Academy Road into condominiums and apartments. And that was strongly opposed by the Historical Society at that time. And it was that opposition and the existence of the Historical Society and the character of the area that I sought to purchase this property. And, you know, I'm fiercely opposed to this proposal, and I'm somewhat mortified and have a sense of betrayal that the Historical Society would actually propose this. You know, the town has done an incredible job with the town center. The lighting, the quality of the restoration of that town green is a tremendous asset to the town of North Andover. And I think the historical area is a real asset to the town. Very few towns on the North Shore can boast such a well-restored area, and I think that's a credit to what the Historical Society has stood for in the past. However, this is just diametrically opposed to what I would perceive as the mission of a Historical Society, its charter. And it really mystifies me that they can bring this forward. So I just like to, you know, put that out there. And, you know, I think that there are alternative proposals that have merit. I particularly like the one of preserving that land for another historical structure, which could provide some financial benefit to the Historical Society and be more true to its mission. There are also other proposals out there that would utilize CPA funds to, you know, do something more in keeping with that property. So I'd just like to go on record with that opinion. Thank you.
You know, there's no, well-
No, there's a misconception there, and I'd just like to address it.
Okay, okay, well, I'll let everyone else come in, we'll come back to you. The only thing I'd say is, again, there's no actual proposal yet before us, so I definitely appreciate the comments, and those are things that we'll definitely consider and talk about if and when a proposal comes. And I would just encourage you, once an actual proposal comes, to come back and talk with us, but also to talk with, you know, the Historical Society in the interim, just to voice your thoughts. Okay, thank you. Is anyone else?
Yes.
Before I get back to Chris, yeah, come on up.
Thank you. I'm Wendy Wakeman, 140 Academy Road. I just wanted to clear up just a small point that's been repeated a couple of times. The common was not created at the same time that that building was there. The common is a wonderful first-period common with beautiful examples of first-period architecture facing it. North Andover is unique in the quality and number of first-period houses it has. There's nobody in this room kind of old enough to remember what happened, except maybe Peter, but-
I'm not sure where you're going to be going with this, but I'm not sure that's the way to get there.
I'm just trying to win a friend, really. But, you know, my mother-in-law, who would be 100, remembers playing on the common when she was a little girl. She remembers the work that was done to clean up some very bad, ill-thought-out developments, some houses that had grown up there, some different things, to make it prettier and neater. But it has been a common since the first period, and the Historical Society has continued to misstate that. And I bring it up because I'm one of those people who thinks that the building itself is not in keeping with that first-period character, so it's a difference of opinion. And I do think the Historical Society has lost its way a bit with all of this, and I look forward to the next several months. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. This gentleman, yeah? Hello?
Hey. My name is Paul Crane. I live at 80 Osgood, corner of Mass and Osgood, the small yellow house in the common. My wife and I, Lori, myself, bought the home about six years ago. Shortly after moving into town, we became members of the Historical Society. And we moved there for a reason, because we like old houses, we want to preserve it. If you happen to know us, we go out of our way to make sure the house looks the way it should. And just for the record, we're very much against this. I'm a member of the Historical Society. I live on the common. I'm a millennial, which I know your plan is trying to reach, and I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
First person to come and tell us they'd like to keep their house looking old. All right. All right. Chris, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah. I just wanted to talk about the comments from Mr. Levens, who said that the Historical Society opposed a building becoming condominiums. And actually, technically, that is not true. The Historical Society never had a formal vote opposing it. There were members of the Historical Society who were opposed to that being turned into condominiums, but the society itself did not. We actually went back through minutes and did some research just to see, that would have been around, oh, I don't know, 2006.
But the letter on the letterhead doesn't mean anything?
I'm just, I'm relating information from the president of the Historical Society, who specifically told me that they, we went back and they searched through minutes to see if the Historical Society had ever taken a vote to oppose the condominiums, and it is not true that never happened. So I just wanted to correct that record. And as far as the common, we know when the common was dedicated as the common, that was approximately 1959. And so when the society, the Improvement Society, gave it to the town in '59, within the next year, the Rogers Building was built. The cornerstone actually says 1960. So it might not be 100 years old, but it's been part of the common for as long as I've been alive. So I guess that's just a matter of perspective, but thank you very much.
Robert?
Hi, I'm Mike Lenahan. I live at 58 Osgood Street. I was president of the North Andover Historical Society in 2009. I wrote the letter. I was, at the meeting of the Board of the Historical Society, we all discussed exactly what our positions were, and I took the lead of everybody on the board to actually create that letter and send it to the town. And this was a letter opposing the conversion of 114 Academy Road into condominiums. So the information that has been reflected isn't accurate, and there's another board member here who was on the board with me at the time and corroborates that there was discussion and agreement by the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, thank you, everyone. Everyone especially lives in the area or is a member of the Historical Society, and a lot of people in town have strong opinions about the common. What I would say is that we will review any proposal before us by an owner of any property. So should the Historical Society or someone on their behalf come to us with a proposal for a zoning change, then we'll review it on the merits and make decisions after public hearings. So we look forward to, if we get anything, we'll review. Okay, great. And thank you to the working group, though. Thank you. All right, town of North Andover, stormwater plan.
All right. So maybe about two or three weeks ago, a meeting was held to go over the draft stormwater plan. We had a representative from Tyne-Bon, as well as Planning Conservation DPW present. And they, there's a presentation describing the draft. I think you all received a copy of this. And we had a very active audience at the conversation, as part of the conversation.
Audience of one?
Yes. It's a fantastic audience.
Exactly.
And being as though the planning board is tasked with a large part of helping to maintain our water quality, I wanted to make sure that you all received a copy of the draft, and if there were any questions, we had those answered. Peter, as well, has asked to, if our consultant from Tyne-Bon could come at some point, and we're working with DPW to see if that can happen. But again, I wanted to make sure this was something on your radar.
And I know we had talked about, and I haven't gotten a chance to finalize, asking someone to come in to talk about the water. Could we do all of that at the, does it make sense to do all of that at the same time? Or are those-
From the sake of efficiency, I think it does make sense, but I think that's a lot in one session.
Okay.
You know, I, again, for reasons I can't explain, I've actually read this thing.
And I started, I haven't gotten through it, so.
I know why, because you care, and don't sell that short.
I just can't explain it.
You have a real interest.
Just can't explain it, but there's a couple of things in here that I did want to bring to the board's attention. One is that right up front on, you know, page five, "Stormwater management tasks are carried out," and it lists some departments and the planning board. And later on that page, it says, "The planning board serves as the enforcement agency for stormwater control." None of this should be a surprise. And there's what I, and we do spend a lot of time on stormwater, for good reason, and this is a lot of the plan in here. Originally, I thought we should have the consultant here, Tyne-Bon, is that how you pronounce that?
I've been mispronouncing it apparently, but-
Yeah. That's who gave the presentation at the earlier meeting, and, you know, it's a fairly short PowerPoint. But my thinking's evolved a little bit since then. I actually think we should have DPW here to present to the planning board what this stormwater management plan would do, and if DPW wants to bring the consultant with them, all the better. I would hesitate to recommend that we have a single agenda item for this and a report of five- or 10-year trend lines on sampling results of the raw lake water, because I think what would happen is it would dilute both, so to speak.
Pun intended?
Yes, pun intended. So I think they should be separate.
So what should we do first? Is this more pressing?
I think we should do this, because this contains information on how sampling is done. I do want to take just a second here to point out that in the body of the report, it refers to an appendix, which is Appendix A? No. B, C, D, E, F, G. Help me out here, what am I missing?
Where are you looking for it?
The plan.
3.
3. 4. Give me a second here. I should have this tabbed. 3. Looking for the plan that the town did in 2009. It's Appendix G.
What page is that?
Appendix G. You got the electronic?
So.
Appendix G, it doesn't give a page number, it's the second-last appendix.
Fine, okay. Yeah? 144. Okay, yeah.
So, this is actually a pretty remarkable plan. It was done in '97, so it's about the same era as the watershed plan was done. That was '87. And then it was updated in '09. And it says two things to me. One, the town, the DPW have done a great job laying out how to protect the drinking water supply, and two, it's in desperate need of updating again. And I think it's a, it's a kind of a, I think we have to be careful about that message, because this actually came up as the consultant was presenting, and she correctly said, "This is a tremendous best practice, this one Appendix G."
It was updated in 2009?
Yeah. And it is-
And who?
-remarkable. It's DPW.
DPW, yeah.
Yeah. But, I mean, when you read through it, there's obvious areas. So I'm not trying to be critical of this wonderful best practice, but in order for it to remain a best practice, it desperately needs to be updated. I would hate to see that a result of raising the question is that it just went away. That would be a huge loss, and I'm sure that wouldn't happen.
There are some best practices, though, in this stormwater-
There's a whole section on best practices, best BMPs, best management practices, that we, of course, referred to in a lot of our decisions, which is another reason for us to, you know, I think, pause a little bit and pay attention to this. And then the last comment I would make is this, as the consultant was briefing on this, and correct me if I have my timelines wrong, but she was saying that it's due, I think, in June.
So we have, this is a draft which is kind of, once they've submitted, it's, our goal is to work towards it, but yes, you-
But there's a deadline.
Yes.
And so I, my takeaway, as I was listening and watching- And so I, my takeaway, as I was listening and watching, was, you know, this is really a good timeline. It's being done with ample time for comment. And then the very next comment was, and we're gonna approve it, like, in a week or two. And I said, well, wait a minute, why are we approving it, rather than having that extended period of time? And I may not have the terminology exactly right, but I don't understand why we would not take the time that we have to have ample input into this. And it might just be that I don't understand the process, but it struck me as, just being strange that, once we have a draft, and they did say that, hey, at any point, you can update and make changes, and that's good, but that's different than having a period of time for ample comment. For example, appendix G, wonderful best practice, should be updated. We have until June, or thereabouts, to update appendix G. Why shouldn't we do that before this report is, whatever the right term is, accepted, approved, or whatever?
So what I strongly suggest is everyone actually take the time, and I know it's a lot of light reading, but definitely take time to review it and, and make comments. We are required under federal law to submit this, which is why, now that we actually have to do it, it's, it's, there's a push to get it done. We'll, basically, the number of, we'll be having to report on education and, and steps that we're taking, and that's, and, and so those steps are detailed in here. So every time you go through a permit and you're looking at, say, low-impact design or stormwater management, anything like that, that's something that we're tracking to submit to EPA. I would say, take, take the time to review this, and I think if you have any questions, that's definitely something that you should present to DPW.
So, okay, so then I guess a couple of questions. Who submitted? The town submitted? Through DPW?
Through, through our consultant.
To the EPA?
Yes.
Or to DEP, or to both?
EP. Well, it's EPA.
Yeah.
Under Mass DP.
Yeah.
And we're tasked at doing this at the local level, so.
And is there an actual deadline for when it needs to be submitted?
Let me see, what did she say the deadline is? And I'm still learning, this is all new to me as well, but.
Okay.
So there's, there's some time, I would, I would move forward, because basically, we're tracking everything in here now, just because.
Well, I guess, what's the benefit of submitting it early?
I know.
Okay, so that's a question. If there's no benefit to submitting it early, why not wait? If there's a benefit to submitting it early, then great.
I, I would say start the review of it early, if you have any question. Don't put it off until this week.
No, no, of course. What kind of comments, questions, what's helpful? Like, are we locating areas where we're interested in, or that we have questions about? I mean, I don't, I, I personally am not in a position to make, you know, scientific or real detailed, say, oh, this, this part is wrong, but just places where we have questions about or thoughts about the process. I guess, what, what are you looking for from us? Or Peter, what would be helpful for us to, to do?
I think what would be helpful for us would be to hear from DPW and the consultant what this does.
Who's?
Because we're supposed to enforce it.
Okay.
So I think the people who are building this should come to the board and say, here's what this plan does.
So once this plan is submitted, what do you now have to do? And then what do we have to do?
Um.
I mean, in terms of, once it's submitted, and, and things, and?
What is it that we're, what is it that we're enforcing?
Okay.
This is the plan, and the people who are responsible for putting it together, the consultant, and the people who are responsible for doing much of this, DPW, I think should come and tell us, hey, here's the plan that you're charged with enforcing.
They're, they're in charge of certain portions. We're also, altogether, we're a collective body working to limit illicit discharge. And so if you want more information on ways that the planning board could do that better, then maybe that's something that's not only here, but also you can have that conversation with DPW.
Well, but I think. It's like, well, how does this document relate to what we do in terms of watershed special permits, or things like that? Are there best practices that we should be making conditions? Are there, you know, are there things that, once this document is submitted and approved, that we should then incorporate into our conditions, into our special permits, into our zoning, whatever?
So I would put it into two, two baskets. The one is what you just said, how do we use it, sort of?
Right, yeah.
But the other is, I have some questions as to how this draft was put together by the consultant. So I'll, I'll give just one example. Section two lists watershed resources. So it lists four watersheds, and it's from the perspective of watersheds that the town is part of. So it's Merrimack River, Ipswich River, Parker, and Shawshene River watersheds. Those are the watersheds. There's a map, it's a good graphic. But then, as the document goes on further, it starts to evaluate watersheds. And if you get to page 2-4, there's an example of a very simplistic evaluation. And here, it's including Lake Kichikwic and Merrimack River, Shawshene, Stevens Pond, et cetera. And so just where this section starts, going back to 2.1, I would just, and I raised this question, but I, I don't think I had a very, we didn't take much time to address it. If section two is intended by the law that requires this to address watershed resources, shouldn't we also, in this section up front, be addressing the one watershed that's of greatest importance to us, which is the lake? And it's not four, it's five, and I think we ought to highlight that.
So I think Lake Kichikwic is part of the Merrimack River watershed?
And they're now looking at, not just, you know, the lake, but they're also looking at rivers, streams, all of that in entirety. So it expands upon.
There's no doubt that the section expands to the point where it does include the lake, but I, I just questioned how this was, this section was structured and put together.
Okay.
I, I think of the five watersheds that the town has, there's one of the five that is clearly of highest priority to us, and if we're gonna prioritize resources and time, we really ought to understand which one of the five is critical.
Okay. So.
So that's just an example of the second basket, if you will, of, you know, a limited number of questions of, how did you put this document itself together, and why did you choose to do it this way instead of that way?
Okay, so why don't we, I don't know if we have enough time to do anything for the next meeting, but. When's our first meeting in December?
You have.
December 4th. Okay. All right. So for now, why don't we all try to see if we can make it through the document in the next couple of weeks?
And on YouTube, I'll send you the link to the actual delivery of the presentation.
Okay.
I'll also send you a link to the presentation again, because I thought that was something that was emailed as well.
So would it be, would it be within a timeline, an okay timeline, to put it back on for a discussion on December 4th, and then maybe we can bring people in?
So, just as a visual aid, this thing is really big. This is how much content there is.
Okay.
Except for appendix G, I would add that. Otherwise, it's just this part. It's pretty skinny.
Okay. Great. Do we have, can we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October 16th?
So many?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody got anything else? All right, so, you got a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.